Good evening. Welcome and thank you for being here with us tonight. And I will call this meeting of Montgomery County to order 7:00 on January 15, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Politics.
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its existence, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item will be our adoption of our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item will be Dr. Meyer's announcements.
Okay. Sure. Of course, not a ton has happened since we met a week ago.
Last week.
But I did mention the basketball game Battle of the Burgs that was at Blacksburg High School last week. The Christiansburg girls won and the Blacksburg boys won. And so both teams looked really good. Christiansburg girls have only lost one and they have a promising future for this season. So really excited about that. I did attend the Beeks Passion Fair on Friday. I saw Ms. Carron there and just wonderful projects again. And so just, but of course, the main thing that's been happening around our office is a lot of numbers been run and budgets and of course, we had a little weather this past weekend too that we had to deal with as well. So, yep, that's it.
Thank you. Next item will be our public address at this time and at each our regularly scheduled meetings, school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds left and when the three minutes has passed. As a reminder, the board does not respond to speakers during public address. Also, our policy does not allow for complaints regarding students or employees of MCPS. If a speaker violates this policy, they will be ruled out of orders. At this time, I do not have any individuals sign up to speak. Is there anybody who would like to address the board from the audience? You may come forward and state your name and address if you are willing to speak to I do not see anyone, then our public address is closed. Next item will be approving our consent agenda items. If there's nothing to be pulled, there will be considered approved. Any questions regarding the consent items? There are a couple grant proposals, very excited ones.
I'd say it's a nice collection.
Yeah, nice collection. Very nice. If you don't have any specific questions, I will move on and consent items are approved. The next item will be our paying our bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions regarding the bills? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We pay our bills. Next item will be entering our work session. May I have a motion to enter into work session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions regarding that? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we're in work session. And next item will be listening Dr. Meyer and Mr. Krantz.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's that time of year again where we get into the budget discussions and I first like to thank our team and the literally hundreds of hours of work they have done to pull the numbers together and get to the point where we are tonight to be able to present a proposed budget to you that hopefully will eventually become your budget. What you have in front of you, you have the final version of last year's book, okay? This is last year's, all right? And this is, it takes an entire year to actually get to this point. So we've just finished last year's complete budget book. So it is up to date. You also have these two sheets, which is the statement of needs, cost sheet, and then also the revenue sheet that's in front of you. And on this, on this sheet, as we're going through the presentation, the lines are numbered and the lines are with the screen that you'll see during the presentation, okay? And then finally, you have the superintendent's statements of needs. And the only thing that's different between this book and this book is the last section, which is the informational section. And basically, we'll be updating the informational section as we go through the budget to make sure it's finalized so that the final copy will look like this as well, okay? And so we just want to make sure it is all correct. So first off, you know, I want to start by talking about the accomplishments of last year's budget because we did a lot of really good things considering the limited resources that we actually had. We were able to give a one and a half percent pay raise to all employees. We were able to correct steps for teachers. That was a main goal for last year is to get teachers on the correct step. For many years, teachers were not on the steps that aligned with their years of experience. And last year, we were able to make that happen. So that was a huge, huge accomplishment last year. Health insurance, we paid $389,000 as a division towards health insurance, but there were no premium increases for our employees. And so the insurance rates for our employees did not go up last year. And that was a huge accomplishment. Something too that we got to were the Wi-Fi hotspots. And, you know, several of our schools now have Wi-Fi hotspots that they check out. And my understanding, they're being used regularly in our schools. And for kids who do not have internet at home, they're able to take these home and get, able to get on their Chromebooks while at home. So they've been very popular and it's something that we'll try to continue to expand as we move forward. Other accomplishments, you know, at one part during the budget season, we didn't think we were going to be able to get to any added positions. But in the end, due to more money from the state, our ADM calculated higher, we were able to then use much of that money to add teachers. Twelve and a half teachers from the get-go. One cybersecurity at Blacksburg High School. Additional nursing teacher at Auburn High. Assistant principals at Kips Gilbert Linkus and Beeks and Harding. And that we just did, but it came out of this year's money because we ended up with more money than we thought because of ADM. We talked about that. Additional math teacher at CMS and English teacher at BMS. Social studies at BMS. Coding at BMS. Spanish at BMS and BHS. Science at BHS. Coding at CMS. PE at BMS and English at CMS. Now you see a lot of BMS, CMS in there. And the reason is, is because, you know, two things that we made sure happened was the, their programmatic needs because of class sizes and the number of students who were actually attending those schools. And the growth in those schools between Christiansburg Middle and Blacksburg Middle. And so we had to pay attention to those needs and that worked out really well. Of course, capital maintenance also is something that we were able to, we were afraid we were not going to be able to get that money. That is just our day-to-day money that's needed to repair things. We were able to, the county did come through for us and give us part of their carryover money. And these are projects currently that are ongoing. The cooling tower at Falling Branch, a mechanical system in the multipurpose room at Christiansburg Primary, a new boiler at Christiansburg Primary. We're in the process of some points soon starting on a partial roof to Margaret Beeks, mechanical system at Shawesville Middle, baseball dugouts at Auburn High School, and then some technology needs were also met with that county carryover as well. Savings and lapse. As to reminder what savings and lapse actually is, first is, you know, unfortunately, we're in a high turnover field. I think this past year, I saw a number, our turnover rate of teachers was 13%. That's high. But we're really not much different than anywhere in Virginia. It's just high turnover rates in teaching. And usually the teachers that retire or leave us, typically, they're making more money than the teachers that we end up hiring because most of the teachers we hire are newer teachers. And the budget is based on everyone returning. So there's a difference there. Once the budget's passed, folks still resign from us. There is, there's money there that can be used and we use it wisely and because we have to. And during the summer, some needs we couldn't get to, we got to them during the summer. One, we had, we added a teacher at Eastmont High School and at Christiansburg Elementary and aide at Harding. We had to add a custodian at Falling Branch because of the additional space from the building that was needed. An assistant principal at CES CPS. And then added an additional half at Auburn High, Auburn Middle, to share between the two. We were able to add baseball and softball to Blacksburg Middle School. This then gave both, at least Blacksburg and Christiansburg, the same athletic opportunities at both schools. We bought two buses with that savings and lapse. Also, we added four athletic training classes at our high schools. And what that allowed us to do was to, for not just offer athletic training, but it actually became a dual enrollment class that is part of the associate's degree program that we are, that will account for their PE for the associate's degree at New River. And then also marching band assistance for our three schools. And we had concerns there. We had three bands that had over 50, 50 students in the band with one person in charge. That's a lot of kids for one person. So we added those, those three assistants at those schools. From the capital funding, some accomplishments, obviously, you know, we finished Falling Branch Elementary School and that expansion at a little under $10 million. The Gilbert Linkus, we did put a partial new roof on Gilbert Linkus Elementary School. The Harding parking lot and sidewalks turned out absolutely beautiful. And they're meeting, they don't just look nice, they do meet a need as well. And of course, the Christiansburg High School athletics, starting with that in terms of as we're moving forward with CHS and with the turf field and for football, soccer, also softball, and that's coming along very well. We're hoping it's done in the next three or four weeks. It would need to be done in the next three or four weeks because in about five or six weeks, it's time to play ball. So I'm very excited about that. Where are we now and what are our challenges that we're facing? One, this is something that always comes up and is of interest to people in our county is how much do we, do we spend on our students compared to other, other school divisions? And with, with debt service, we do spend more than any other county around us. But of course, we've had some unique situations in the past several years that have caused us to have to invest in, in capital and in buildings. And whether, you know, whether it be Blacksburg High School, Auburn Middle, Auburn High School, and so that is, that is a much higher cost. And what we'll see is some of the other school divisions' costs will also go up in the near future because they're starting to build new buildings too. Because they, they need them as well. And we've explored, okay, what other reasons, you know, why is it too that our teachers get paid less than any other school division around us almost, especially at the beginning of the scale, but yet we spend more? And of course, like I said, it's a debt. It's also, our county has chosen to have small schools. That needs to be understood. We have four high schools, four middle schools, and two of them are very small. And it costs more to run those small schools. And I've, county has chosen to do that several years ago. I think we have four wonderful communities and those, those schools service their communities very well, but the reality is they cost more, okay, to run those small schools. And I think that drives our price up. Something else that we've invested in over the past 25 years that is, that's, I believe is important and it's essential, and that is special education. We lead the state with inclusion. And with inclusion, you know, the decision was made 25 years ago to go full inclusion with our special education programs. And with that, costs more money. And we spend more on special education than any, any school around us and possibly in the state of Virginia per student. And so, so that's something that does drive our cost up as well. But I think it's a program that's well worth it to meet the needs of our special needs Something we've talked about, enrollment is up by 224 students since 2009, yet we're still down 35 teachers. Our goal this year is to compete with Rafford. I believe in Montgomery County, we ought to be able to compete with Rafford City Schools in what we pay our teachers. And what, what I showed you last year is that we were behind them in about the first nine or 10 steps. And we didn't make any headway last year. In fact, we fell further behind. We gave a one and a half percent raise. They gave close to a 3%. So now we're behind 15 or 16 steps in one year. And that, and I think that's unacceptable. And so what we're doing is we're putting together a plan that will, if Rafford, and we've gotten word that they may be looking at about a 3% raise, if they do give a 3% raise, then we're, then we will go ahead of them at each step. And you can see how much in the right column, if they give a 3% raise, how we would adjust our pay scale to be better than them. And I think that's important. And it's, you know, and if you'll notice too, the first three years, we've basically made the first teacher pay more, a lot more. But I think it's important to get the, get the best in. And I think we can do that. If we don't act on this this year and they get what they're asking for, we'll go from being behind at the 10th step up to the 10th step to up to a 16th to 17th step, we will be behind for the entire pay scale in just three years, behind Rafford, if we don't make this happen this year, okay? Additional challenges, of course, health insurance will always, seems like it always goes up. We're looking at about a half a million for that to go up and keep premiums the same. Utilities are going up, cost of goods going up, tariffs are hurting us as well, and the rising cost of inflation. You know, what folks need to understand is that, you know, just like in your household, when prices go up for utilities, they go up here as well. We have the same cost. And when inflation rises, it rises for us also. Teacher recruitment, a couple of slides behind, I apologize.
Just tell me you need to click.
And so, teacher, teacher recruitment is a challenge. Very critical shortage areas in most, all areas now. You know, we're, we have a starting pay lower than the other surrounding divisions. Some data there, 40% increase in unfilled teaching positions in Virginia and a 35% decrease in education majors. 35% fewer are going into education. And so what, what that means is there's fewer out there looking for jobs, there's more that we have to attract to us. And at the end of the day, what they get paid matters. And we need to attract the best. And of course, our enrollment, again, it's up by a lot and it continues to rise, yet we're still down teachers. Other challenges, maintaining our buses and vehicle fleet. We've done a good job the last three years, but we bought eight buses a year, but we have to keep on that schedule, buying the eight buses a year. An area that we haven't done as good, we did a little better last year is our vehicle fleet. We have a lot of vehicles through maintenance, through technology and administration that have to be kept up. And we're starting to try to get some of, we've had vehicles that are 20, 25 years old with 300,000 miles on them that we're trying to not use, okay? And so we're trying to work, work on that. Of course, maintaining our buildings. Overcrowding in Christiansburg. I thought it was important to talk about overcrowding in Christiansburg in this budget presentation, although it doesn't, you know, it's more of a capital issue, but I think it's something we need to constantly address or address soon. The enrollment at Bellevue compared to capacity, we're 36 over. CES, we're 196 over. CPS, we're 205 students over capacity. We're under at Falling Branch. Total, we're over 232 seats in Christiansburg Elementary Schools. And that's at 100% capacity. You do, we do not want to be at 100% capacity. A good rule of thumb is about 85% capacity at all of our schools, which would mean we're over 462 students in Christiansburg Elementary Schools right now. That's a lot. That shows you something needs to be done. At the high school, and going back real quick too, it's, we're at 115% of the capacity in elementary. At the high school, we're at 119% of the capacity. We have a capacity of 866. We have over 1,000 enrolled there and more will be going there in the near future, okay? And so that is a great need as well. Additional cost that will be added without new buildings. One, modulators that we're going to have to, we've got to get rid of the old trailers at CPS and CES and at CHS. And the, and two, we need a road at CES CPS that takes the traffic off the main road. It is dangerous. And it is, it is, it is something bad waiting to happen and we've got to address that. You can either do it one of two ways. Get more students out of the schools and get them to other schools and build a school, all right? Or build a road. And probably, we might have to build a road anyway, to be quite honest with you, all right? But we got to get them, get them off the main road. But between those added modulators and the cost per year, you're looking at 1.4 million the first year and 300,000 each additional year. So my question is, is this where we want our money to go? Over a million dollars into modulators and then continue with the $300,000 a year? Would we rather do something better and different and build new schools? Other, other considerations that is, that is happening in our redistricting committee is Falling Branch, the possibility of them coming a multi-community school. Falling Branch, you know, it is a possibility that some Falling Branch students may go to Auburn Middle and Auburn High because there are seats out there. There are possibilities that part of that district will have to start going to East Montgomery because there are seats in Eastern Montgomery. And so that is something that is, that is being considered. But even with doing that, even if we moved that direction and made that recommendation, Christiansburg would still be overcrowded. It still wouldn't take enough out of Christiansburg to not make them overcrowded. It just would not. It would, it would help some, but it would not be a total fix. Harding Avenue, we're in a position, we're going to have to add modulators there next year. We're already looking at them and looking at the cost and what that will look like, but we need at least four modulators at Harding Avenue Elementary School. It keeps growing and growing and growing. We have a first grade over there, three first grades, I think they're at 25 now. That's a lot. In fact, this past week, we had to add an aide to help out with those 25 in those first grade classes. But folks keep moving there. And so that's an issue. I keep hearing about all the space we have at Price's Fork Elementary School. We don't. We did a few years ago when we built it, but right now, we're about 190 under capacity, okay? 100% capacity, which you don't want to get to 100% capacity, obviously, because that's when you have another problem, all right? But with the neighborhoods being built around Price's Fork, across from Price's Fork, huge neighborhoods going in. Next to Blacksburg High School, huge neighborhoods going in. They're all going to Price's Fork. We estimate maybe within two years, it will be full at Price's Fork. And so the good thing with that is that was good planning to build a school large enough to take on future growth. That's how you do it. And so, good job for those on the board at that time. Excellent, all right? But we're looking at the different creative alternatives to help with overcrowding in Christiansburg, but it's going to still, still be overcrowded, okay? All right. So next, I'm going to ask Mr. Krantz to come up. He's going to go to line by line on the budget. So you can, if you just follow this sheet here, he will take you right through it.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer and the board. So the first thing is our salaries. As Dr. Meyer has mentioned, what we've done inside the budget is to equal, to exceed Rafford at step zero through step 20, and then a 3.5% raise thereafter for all employees is $4.95 million. One thing to consider as you look at the budget, while it's needed to address our competitiveness with the surrounding areas and addressing the teacher shortages and the challenges in competition, it's also important to know that last year in the budget, when the governor announced the 3% raise, that was to be spread out over two years. If we were not to do another 1.5% on average, and it's all based off of SOQ funding is another point to remember, we would lose approximately $2 million of revenues if we weren't to do that additional 1.5% this year. So if that were to be eliminated, it's a double in that you, yes, you save some money on the expense side, but then we lose a corresponding amount on the revenue side of the equation. The second thing is you looking at our pay is that we still, even if we get close to Rafford and exceed it, we still will have challenges as we compete with both Salem, Roanoke City, and Roanoke County. So we're addressing one of our immediate needs, but we still have a very competitive situation as we go further. The other thing we're doing within our salaries this year is we're moving our coaching supplements to a percentage, which is what traditionally I've seen. And in that way, as my base goes up, my percentage stays the same, but the amount of dollars I get. And that will allow us to be competitive. That's one thing I've noticed that since I've been here with the great school system we have. Trying to attract coaches is more of a challenge than what I would have anticipated from the outside. And I think the biggest part is because of the pay. Our, what we're asking our coaches to do is a lot and we haven't been competitive on the pay side. The other thing we've done this year in the plan is raise our substitute pay. Right now, we pay $78 per day and that's whether you're a degreed or a non-degree. We're proposing to go $110 a day for a substitute with a degree and $83 a day for a substitute without a degree. Our next is the additional positions that we need. We've got 23, 23 FTEs, which is 22 instructional position and one administrative position. And that seems like a lot. However, we had over 90 requested positions by the departments and schools. So while, and if you remember in Dr. Meyer's presentation, we're still today compared to '09 and '10, 35 positions short if we were just equal. Yet our total number of students are up. The challenges, the requirements academically are tighter and stricter today. So things have moved to the detriment in not having those teaching positions. And even with this, we're still not equal. with this, we're still not equal, but it gets us closer. We've increased, based off of our discussions with y'all, the pay on the board side from $4,800 per member to $7,200 per member, keeping the differential on the chairman's side as well as health insurance for school board members. Our healthcare costs, as you know, we're self-insured. Dr. Meyer broke out the health insurance last year, where we brought on the HSA, which was a very good move, and we're seeing more and more of our staff and our employees go to that route. But our costs are still going up. And with this, if we fund this at this level, our employees will not be asked to put any additional money on their side. The district would be covering 100% of the projected cost increase. We anticipate that our utility costs are gonna continue to go up. And that's just an estimate. Things are changing every day, and that number is just us taking our best shot at what we know based on the information we got. We get into technology, and this is one thing that I know there'll be a heavy discussion about. Overall, in our technology, we're asking for $781,000 increase. The biggest part of that is twofold. One, if we're gonna stay current on technology and the needs of our student and staff, we need to provide them the assets, and those things get retired, just like we do with laptop computers we have at our homes. They don't last us forever. They have to be replaced, and we have to replace our equipment. If you think about it, Blacksburg High, Auburn High and Auburn Middle, which was built 2011 roughly to 2013, a lot of their technology is coming up on the end of their useful life. And those were built with bond funds. So that's 20-year money. Now we're coming to the stage. And as Dr. Meyer mentioned about the challenges we have facilities-wise, we've talked about that as a district, a good rule of thumb is 2% of the replacement value should be what's reinvested back into the schools, either in the form of capital improvement or on maintenance and repair. So that works out to about 11.4 million dollars. And that's a 50-year life on the building. Yet our investment runs right at about a million, nine to $2 million a year. That gap doesn't get smaller over time, it just continues to get larger and larger and larger. So it's imperative that if we want to maintain our competitiveness, if we want our students to remain their competitiveness, we have to reinvest into our technology. Bandwidth, we need to, as more and more users are using our system, as we're putting more and more drains on the system, we need to increase our bandwidth. We've increased our property and casualty, just because we have more assets, we've trued up with our insurance carrier, and we've had some claims, but that's been a very small part of our increase. We've talked about the lifecycle of technology, the one-to-one on the Chromebooks, and then the $250,000 is also important. While it meets to keep us current on technology for our students and staff, it also allows us to do the E-rate. On the E-rate side, we receive on average about $400,000 a year. $150,000 comes out of what's called Tier One, and then Tier Two, which is one that's changed over years. Many times, they've talked about eliminating Tier Two. Tier Two, we average right at about $250,000 on that. School buses, we want to maintain our fleet at 15-year life, no buses to go over that, which is what's recommended. That's eight new buses a year. We've been able to do that since Dr. Meyer's here. And the total request we have for the county is $6,155,794. When you look at the revenue side, you'll see some adjustments on the state-funded portion that comes about because of the increase in ADMs. We budgeted at 9,700 students. Number two, it's also the true-up of the numbers with the state based on the biennium and what the governors propose. You'll also see the increase on some of the smaller items, both under local revenues and from the county. Those are true-up numbers, and you'll see the 6.155 million coming from the county as their general contribution to the school system. Budget calendar. We have our employee group presentations and public hearing on February 5th. The 12th is out there as a tentative date if needed. The plan is to have y'all approve the budget at February, our February 19th meeting. Then the county administration will present their budget on March 4th. A joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on March 18th, and then the county adopt their budget on April the 15th. Depending on where things go with that, April 16th to do the budget discussions, a tentative workshop on April 30th, and then your approval on May 7th of our budget.
A couple of things to close with. The clarity needed with the raise this year that's coming from the state. You know, it's 5% for the last two years. We gave one and a half last year, so that means we're required to give three and a half towards SOQ positions for this year, okay? Now remember, not all of our teachers are SOQ-funded, all right? Most or a lot are, but many are not. I can't see us giving raises to, we don't even technically identify who's SOQ and who's not. So we would have to give the raises an average of 3.5% to all teachers. If we do not get adequate funding, or if we do not give that 3.5% to our teachers, we will not receive 2 million from the state. So it's important we receive that 2 million from the state. So at the end of the day, if we do not get enough money and we only are able to give the raise to teachers to make sure we get that 2 million, you know, there may be considerations to other employee groups not being able to get the same amount of money in terms of raises. And that is not what I want to do, and I'm sure that's not what you want to do, because I think all of our employees deserve, deserve the raise. And so that's something, something to remember, you know, as we're going through this, and to make sure you're letting folks know that, we need the money to uncover the entire raise for our, for all of our employees and to become competitive with, with Rafford City Schools. And, you know, that is something that is very, very important to us this year. And so, what questions do you have at this point?
Any questions? The first study, I don't know.
So I guess I'll start. I'd like, I'll ask a few questions just to get a little bit more clarity on, on this raise and on the, on the one and a half percent and the three and a half percent. So last year, refresh my memory on this, so last year, we were given one and a half percent as part one of two for SOQ positions from the state, correct? And that, the second part of that is coming from the state this year, and that is 3.5% for SOQ positions from the state. Is that correct?
It is, and it's not, and we'll tag-team this. Let me start. You gotta remember, yes, they, they do not 100% fund even the SOQ positions. That's based on the composite index. They say we're gonna give you your composite index worth towards the SOQ position, so we still have to fund some of the SOQ positions, and, and it costs us to do that.
Sure.
And where I wanted to clarify, we don't get anything on a partial. We don't receive our funding from the state until we meet, reach the 3%.
I'm sorry, the three?
Three and a half percent raise that we had to do over two years that the state required. We don't receive any additional SOQ funding until we reach that point, which would be this year.
So that was, so this is what I'm trying to get to the bottom of it. It's three and a half percent over two years, or is it 5% total over?
It's 5% over two years.
That's the new request.
Last year?
So last year was one point?
It was three.
Last year was three, but the governor's now proposing five, correct?
So if it stayed at three, then our requirement would be to give a one and a half percent raise this year, since we gave one and a half last year. Now our requirement, if it stays at 5% like the governor wants, we'll, we'll have to give a three and a half percent.
Gotcha.
On average.
Okay. So, so the part two has moved. They said that the goal has moved on us.
Yeah.
This is kind of why I was a little bit confused.
Which is good, they're giving us more money, but they're requiring us to pony up more as well.
Okay, I, I understand.
Which is challenging.
Yes.
You know, that's, yeah.
I understand that. And then the second question I have, you know, I heard a lot about wanting to keep up with Radford. Mr. Krantz also mentioned that we still have challenges with Roanoke County and City and some of the other counties. In the past, we've kind of done things by average. We've looked at multiple counties around us. Can you explain a little bit more about, you know, why Radford and help, help set that within the bigger picture?
Absolutely. You know, they are a county that touches us. They're the ones that are the furthest ahead, you know, that is in the closest proximity, okay? And they're the, the next step to go after, you know? I truly believe that, yeah, we need to get as good as Roanoke County, we need to do as well as Roanoke and Salem. So next year, hopefully, I'm coming back and saying, hey, we need to be as good as Roanoke County.
But just so that I understand and so that everyone understands, we're still behind those counties. Radford is simply the next step.
They're the next ones that we would like to, and, and, and two, in terms of our economic situation compared to Rafford City, it's, it's, I, I think there's, there's no reason that we shouldn't be paying our teachers as much as Rafford City. We should not. Not with the growth here.
Any other questions? Dr. Meyer at this point?
Sorry, I've, oh, I've got more, but I don't remember the people's hands. So on the, help me out here on the line items. Tell me on number 30, so, so in the presentation, you broke out the lifecycle and the, and the one-to-one Chromebook initiative, the 147K, almost 148 and 185. And then there's this line item on 35 for the technology equipment. I'm assuming there's something else there besides those two things, because those two things don't add up to 1.7 million.
No. What it is, is that technology right now is kind of broken up into a lot of different line items, and we need, we're doing that analysis right now. And what we'll do is, we'll, in the future, we'll bring it together. That's why I said it tonight. That it's $781,000 increase for technology. I'm in multiple places here. We'll bring it back to you. We'll do a quick schedule and show you, but technology's one group.
Sure. And then my last question on, can you say, I kind of missed what you were saying. You, you mentioned a stat about, I couldn't tell if it was about maintenance or technology or both, as far as to putting back 2%. Is that per year?
It's 2% per year. If you want your school buildings to, of your replacement value. So our replacement value is over half a billion dollars, based on the square footage we have. Correct. And if you want to build in the last 50 years, just like we do in the commercial side, where you'll see new carpet coming in, you'll see renovations to restrooms. As the regulations change, you're doing your compliance with ADA, things like that, but you're staying competitive in the marketplace. It's doing the same thing with these buildings, is that if we want them to last 50 years, you need to be investing 2% of that replacement value per year.
Which for us comes out to about 11.4 million.
11.4 million, yes, sir.
What, what do we currently?
We're right now right at about 2 million.
2 million, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Fager?
Anybody else? When I did the presentation on the, I'm going back to the board raise and health insurance for 81,000 for the school board, I was very clear about the timeline and how this is supposed to work. And one of the things I pointed out is that the insurance can just simply be put in the budget. It does not require any separate vote, it just has to be appropriated. However, the school board raise has to be a separate agenda item that is vetted and voted on separately. And when I put the timeline up there, I was very clear that that needed to be done either at, I listed the previous meeting, but certainly by this meeting in order for us to set that amount. And I appreciate you took an amount from my presentation, but this board has not discussed that amount or set that amount. And at this point, the chair has failed to put it on the agenda, and therefore, there is not time before the public hearing now for this board to set that amount appropriately so that it is included in the budget as presented. And so for that reason, I think it needs to be removed at this time until it goes through the proper approval process that is required by law to do so. And it doesn't, it's not clear, and it sounded like you put in 7,200 times seven, whatever that is, so that's about a little over half of this. Should probably come out until we can do that properly. And I was very clear, I think we need to be very transparent about that process, and it has not been done as it should have been done. It should have been on the agenda.
Our budget included just the potential increase, so we have a placeholder.
I realize you have a placeholder, but we have to follow the law. I appreciate you put a placeholder in there.
But at this point, just a placeholder so that we have a balanced budget.
But this has, but you're, you're putting up a proposal next time, for public hearing, that is gonna include an amount that this board has not approved. And then it's going to be, we'll be asking for approval at the following meeting before we've had the ability for the public to hear what we are requesting and to speak on that amount.
I, but I mean, it's a budgeted number that's just, just like.
For you, it's a budgeted number, but for us, we can't.
I agree. We couldn't spend it. That's just a budgeted placeholder.
Correct. But I just want to make it clear that we have not, as a board, done what should have been done for this purpose, and therefore, we will need a separate public comment opportunity once we set that amount. And we will not be able to do that until the next meeting, which is the public hearing. So we will need, and unfortunately, we're supposed to approve this budget prior to when that can happen.
I know, but the, this is, you're approving the budget to go to the Board of Supervisors. You're not approving the budget.
Correct. Correct. But when we take that budget to the Board of Supervisors and it has a certain raise amount in there that we have not approved, we're putting the cart before the horse.
I think logistically, we can figure it out.
I mean, it's really a transparency issue, but it's one that should have been addressed and hasn't been.
Yeah, we've done a presentation, you've done a presentation on, and I think folks know out there what's going on, and we can, you know, we can go through that process starting at the next meeting, but really, until the May meeting, when y'all put, y'all do the final, that's, that's, that's it anyway.
Actually, it, for us, it's, it all depends on that, that meeting where we vote on it. Then it can technically go into the budget for that May approval. But we, as a board, should not be asking for it when we haven't even set an amount and allowed the public to speak on it.
That's fine. We can do that in the next several meetings, and it will make sure it gets there by the Any other questions?
Thank you for all the, the work and what you get, what the staff has done, what you guys have done. Appreciate it.
Incredible.
Now we're ready to turn our regular session. We have a motion to return our regular session.
So moved.
Motion second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are in regular session. And our next item will be the approving our fine arts diploma seal.
All right. So we presented information about the requirement for the fine arts diploma seal. Our last meeting, the seal recognizes students who pursue an interest in fine arts while in high school. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the fine arts diploma seal.
We have a motion to approve our seal.
So moved.
Any discussions? We really don't have the art form of the seal yet, all right?
There's not a contest.
Yeah.
They're working on it.
We'll show it to you when it's done. How's that?
Just, just, just excited about it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our seal.
All right. Next, program studies was presented at the last meeting. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the program of studies for use during course registration.
We have a motion to approve our program of studies.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any other questions regarding that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our program of studies.
All right.
Next item, some grants.
Yes. Grant 2018 EPA School Bus Rebate Program. This grant would provide about 25% of the funds to replace two diesel school buses with two new buses certified to EPA's cleanest emission standards. The buses identified for replacement are 16 years old. Tonight, we're asking for you to approve this grant.
We have a motion to approve the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Will, will this, will this get us ahead on our bus replacement?
Actually, it would be only a certain amount of money towards a purchase of, of the buses. How much was that, Mr. Krantz?
It's 40,000, 20,000 per bus. Our cost would run right at about 90,000.
Okay, all right. So we get 20,000 towards each of the buses.
So not even a full bus amount.
So not even a full bus amount.
But every little bit helps, though.
Yes.
Any other questions regarding the grant? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our grant.
All right. Next grant proposal, nurturing at-risk preschoolers in high-quality private centers. MCPS participates on the Board of Smart Beginnings, NRV. Because of this partnership, we must approve the grant to help provide more private preschool centers in the Shawlsville area. We are at the capacity for our own preschool program. This grant will help fund additional programs so that more students can have high-quality preschool opportunities. We're asking you to approve this grant tonight.
And when you say "we're at capacity," you mean within our public schools, our programs are at capacity? Is that what you mean when you say that? Is that correct, Jonathan? So these, this would help establish private centers to supplement what we already do in ours.
I think, I believe we have waiting, let's start.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
May I have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second, any other questions?
No, I'm very grateful, though. I think Dr. Meyer's emphasized over and over again that those first years are the most important, and that's where we need to be helping.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve the grant.
Sorry, can I just ask one question related to that? When, when we move, if, well, when we move forward with a new elementary schools in the future, is there, is there any kind of a, a thought or plan towards expanding the preschool programs? Using that opportunity to expand the capacity of our preschool, of our own preschool programs?
Sure, absolutely. Dr. Krantz, would you like to come up and talk about our preschool initiative and how that's connected? Because that's a different funding source as well. We have to receive funds for that. What's the acronym?
VPI, preschool initiative. We do have the VPI preschool initiative, which we've participated with for many years. And then we also have funded one program through general fund. We will continue that initiative, it's a grant initiative. So we have to work with VPI on what we can do, and there is a limitation to what they will pay for.
I see.
Right now, it's 18 students per each preschool. And as we've grown schools, at one time, we had two preschools at Bellevue. Once we opened Fallen Branch, we were able to move one of those preschools to Fallen Branch because that's where the students were.
Sure.
But our capacity was so limited at the schools, we didn't have space. So that's another consideration we'll take as we, as we look at new schools. Where do our students live and getting them into the school that's closest to them.
All right, thank you.
Like, right now, we have two Fun with Friends programs. One's at Eastmont Elementary and one is at Kipps Elementary. And so there are students that go all the way to Eastmont Elementary that may be, and their families may live in Ryanair. Because that's the closest opportunity for them.
Yeah, I understand.
Any other questions? Now, next item will be unfinished business. Any board members have unfinished business to bring it up? I don't hear any. I would, I would assume that we will, discussion of our salary as a part of an unfinished business for the next agenda?
Actually, it's technically new business, it's never been on the agenda, so it actually...
But we, we discussed before.
Right, but we've had a presentation, but we haven't, we should put it on there as...
As a new business.
As a first, yeah.
So that will be the new business. Anyway, the next question will be any new business? That would be it. Any other new business that you can think of? Then will be announcements and information. Any board members have any announcements? I know our ESPN conference moved from, due to ICE, from last 14, 15 to 23rd and 24th of this coming week.
I thank Mr. Drake for changing all the combinations.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much, and I heard...
She's already rescheduled with most of our legislators to meet next Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, appreciate that. I know it was a lot of going back and fixing. And I'm really sorry that Ms. Franklin had to go all the way there.
So, the... Did you still have your task force meeting? Ms. Franklin, did you still have your task force meeting? You didn't, okay.
So the NAACP Martin Luther King Program is this Sunday, I believe at 3:00 at Shaker Memorial Baptist Church. And the Diallogon Race is January 26th, starting at 9:00 a.m. with Coffee with a Cop. And then the program will begin at 10:00, from 10:00 to 2:00. So please register.
Any other announcements? Then you will see our upcoming school board meetings. Any questions regarding those? If not, we're ready to enter the closed session.
Let me say something real quick, if you don't mind. Redistricting will come back, first meeting in February for...
Presentation.
For a presentation on a recommendation for Phase 1, which is moving a few students from CPS, CES to Fallen Branch. We're in the process of sending letters out to parents who may be affected by that recommendation. And so we will not ask for an approval until the beginning of March, which would be even two more meetings. So there's plenty of opportunity for folks to come and, and have their voices heard. The committee is also working on Phase 2. And the Phase 2 piece, we're looking at, that would not take effect in this coming fall. It would be another year out. But that Phase 2 would affect also CMS, CHS, Auburn Middle and Auburn High, and Eastmont as well, possibly. And they're still, the committee's still working through that recommendation. That would not come to you until beginning of April. And the same setup, letters go out prior to letting folks know this would affect you if this were to go through. It would give folks three meetings to come to, to voice their, their concerns, and we're letting them know when those meetings are, so folks can, can be heard. And so, but they're, they're working very hard through a very difficult process. And as you know, it's never something that folks want to do. Although I recently heard, I think it's Loudoun County, this year, they're redistributing 100 schools.
They do it very frequently. They do it yearly.
Our community is not as used to, to it, so, so, so anyway, but I just wanted to let you know that's, that's coming, that's coming up.
Making a comment to that, even though Fallen Branch has capacity in their school, again, the parent pickup line and drop-off line is also unsafe and ridiculous at that school. Is there, I mean, if we're going to bring in more kids, some, we've got to come up with something. I mean, I know you can't say you can't bring them, but in the evening, it's wrapped down around almost where the interstate starts. I mean, it's, it's getting bad, too.
Well, it's shorter than what it was, because we added another 100, probably 100 to 150 feet.
See, I don't think it's shorter than it was, I think it's worse.
I mean, it was maybe because more people are picking up.
That might be, but it's...
But it's 150 feet longer the way we did it.
Yes, ma'am, we'll look at that.
Because I mean, it's, it's, it's very, I, I couldn't believe it. I happened to go down, and, I mean, it was, like I said, when my kids went there, it was down and around. But now it's down and around and almost coming back up. And, and like I said, you're getting on interstate right there, I mean, it's...
It was real bad last year, and, and, you know, and we thought that extra 130 feet would get them off the road, but...
And obviously, we still have to...
Obviously, we still can't, so...
At some point, too, is it, is it worth looking at the, you know, the root cause of that, too, rather than just keep building more and more and more lanes? I mean, is, do we have an issue with some of those bus routes with transportation that's causing really long bus routes where parents are feeling compelled to drive when we're offering? Do you, do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I think a lot of it's just so many parents just don't want their kids riding the bus anymore. They think they're, you know, exposed to so much. I mean, that's kind of some of the stuff I've heard, that, you know, they're so afraid they're exposed to this or exposed to that. And, you know, I try to encourage them, because we've got so many needed, we've got more safety precautions now on buses than we've ever had. But parents are so, it seems like they've gotten so protective. And, and I'm not saying it's right or it's wrong, I'm just saying, I mean, Lois, you're agreeing with me. So I think, I mean, that's the things I hear, you know?
Plus, there's a trade-off there. If we put more kids on the buses, we have to buy more buses. So we can buy more buses or we can add more pavement.
And I mean, and that was one of my questions and concerns last year, is, you know, I, I hear a lot of, and I'm not saying that they are or they're not, I'm just saying I hear some concerns from parents saying, you know, "Why are we running all these new buses that are half-empty?" You know, and things like that. Well, we have to, you know, that's just part, part of a public school system, we have to. And some of them are to capacity, but some of them are not. And because there are so many riders now at every school. It's, I mean, it's crazy, you know?
Well, I, I don't know that we have to solve it now, but I'm just, I'm suggesting that in addition to looking at mitigating some of those long lines through...
Well, if we're thinking about putting more students at Fallen Branch, then that's a, that's...
It's going to get worse.
That's another problem that's, it needs to be done somehow.
We thought we addressed it when we did it.
Yes, we did, and we, and we can look at it. One of the challenges you have with the buses is obviously the amount of time we want children on buses. And, and that's the one thing I hear from parents, is that, but because we're over 400, almost 400 square miles, it makes it a challenge on our buses to maximize the number of seats, just for time.
And that's why you have some buses that aren't full, because otherwise, those kids would be on there for an hour and a half each way.
Right, and I, I, but I think you have more of that issue in the outer line areas, not so much the Christiansburg Fallen Branch.
In town, no, you're exactly right.
And that's where your longer lines are.
Yeah.
So I, I, I just have to disagree that that's the main problem.
Well, I mean, just visiting all the schools, we have huge traffic issues at a number of our schools.
Right, I understand, I'm just saying.
Christiansburg Primary, Christiansburg Elementary. Harding, Harding Elementary, I do have significant challenges. Blacksburg, we encounter it. Now, fortunately, we have longer queues, and that's what we'll look at, can we increase the queue? Because that's, in essence, what we did. We'll see what we can do to increase that queue, so we can get the parents off.
The next place we're going to have an issue, as prices for fills up the next couple of years with all that development, they're already at the road. And that is a long line that they have over there, and so it's a lot of...
But Ms. Baum, we'll look at that, it's a valid point.
Well, you know, one of the questions that arose, and I know it's not our property, but you know, that parking lot was there that the town owns, and, you know, there may be some way to s it somehow, because, you know, just reading some comments on, which I very rarely get on Facebook anymore because of that. But, you know, just why can't the town and county work together a little bit better with those kinds of issues? Because it's about students, it's about kids. And so it's just a throw out there. And I know all schools deal with that, but we're not moving more students to all schools.
Understood, understood, yes, ma'am.
But at Christiansburg Elementary especially, because of the way that parking lot is and things are locked in, folks are complaining that they can't get out to get to work, to get to wherever. Because that's one of the issues also with folks bringing their kids and picking them up, is because of their work schedules.
Correct.
They can't do the buses. So, but at Christiansburg Elementary, the way that parking lot is all blocked off and everything, you can't get in and out of that.
Mr. Krantz has already looked at that. In fact, in this presentation, we have $350,000 that we need to spend there to, to correct that problem.
Correct.
We already looked at a possible traffic pattern to get everybody off the roads and get them going in the right directions towards behind the schools and coming back around.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
So that's something I think we need to spend money on, go soon, to leave it. Because I, I was there the other day, and I about saw a horrible accident.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, it was one of those, it just makes you, like, I just closed my eyes, and they didn't hit each other, but I thought they were.
And two, because I brought it up, like, I've got an employee, she adjusted her work schedule. So she comes in later so she can take her student to school. You know, so it's, that's why I said, I think a lot of how it once was is changing, so...
It's, it, you know, a lot of folks do it for different reasons. I, I try to take mine to school in the morning, and it's sometimes the most fun I have in a day. I just enjoy the time with them, I mean, you know, when I can do that, so, this is a lot of different reasons.
Kids have a lot more after-school activities, too, that require parents to pick them up sometimes. Or a babysitter to pick them up. There's all kinds of reasons.
Yeah, so many reasons.
Bottom line, we can need to make it as safe as possible.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other comments, questions? We are ready to go into closed session. Our next order is business, closed session. We have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one employee matter as authorized by Section 2.2-371, 1 of Code of Virginia.
So moved.
Motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are in closed session.
Got a lot of happy folks here tonight, getting me to go watch the Hoos play Virginia Tech.